Call the meeting to order any items from the public. Okay, if not, can I have a motion to approve the agenda if there's no modifications or changes?
I shall move.
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, motion carries. Purchase order log, any questions for Tracy out there?
I had one that she answered for me, so.
She's very good at that. Thank you, Tracy. Any other questions, comments? All righty, internal budget revisions, we have one.
Mr. President, you do, you have a one request from Clerk Petrusi requesting to move $500 from their rents line item into their printing line item, and the monies are available to do so.
We have a change in status, I'm going to read a memo here from the prosecuting attorney's office for the salary relocations. On March 2024, as referenced by the memorandum submitted by this office, we elected to hire brand-new attorneys at lower salaries rather than filling our felony positions at a higher salary. Additionally, we hired a receptionist and promoted from within of our own JA assistant position. Thus, I am proposing a salary reallocation that is within my current allocated budget. My proposed allocations accompanies with this correspondence, it is in the attempt to create more parity among employees based on their job duties and assignments, while also taking achievement into account. I'm happy to meet with you or any representation of the county's commissions if you deemed it appropriate. It would be my request that this reallocation be effective May the 16th, 2024. Also, upon the implementation of this reallocation, I am asking to move the temporary upgrade status, I'll remove the temporary upgrade status of Summer Nails' salary, or it is to reflect that what is proposed in the reallocation. And that's from Prosecutor Katie Wilks delegating. And with that, I will read them off here. His new hire recommendation, oh, I'm sorry, this is the other page here. All the ones that are highlighted?
Yes, sir.
Raymond Boyce from 104,400, I'm sorry, 104,400 to 110,000. Christopher Barnhart from 100,625 to 102,102,000. Robert Garrettson from 96,025 to 97,000. Shannon Kaiser from 89,700 to 91,000. Casey Putney from 83,000 to 84,000. Jared Smallwood from 81,000 to 82,005. Dominic Corsini from 70,200 to 73,000. Cora Rutherford from 58,500 to 59,500. Ashley Brodus, okay, 56,925 to 57,500. Summer Nails from 51,480 to 57,500. Elizabeth Hott from 54,614 to 55,500. Linda Robinson from 43,300 to 48,800. Megan Trippett from 40,250 to 44,500. Claire Stansel from 39,100 to 43,500. And Chelsea Shockey from 39,100 to 43,500. And the Klee Williams, Cali, I'm sorry, Cali Williams from 41,000 to 43,000.
I'd like to make a note that Christopher Barnhart is not related to me in any respect.
Okay, note taken. Is that it, Penny, for that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I have a change in status for new hire recommendation received from Brian Ross, Community Development Director, for Dan Tracy as a plans reviewer with the salary of, starting salary, I'm sorry, with the salary of 72,000, that's effective May the 15th. New hire recommendation received from the Honorable Sheriff Blair for the following: Alexis Worley as a police social worker with the annual salary of 67,771, that's effective May the 20th. Tyler Cole-Moser as a deputy with the annual salary of 52,466, effective May the 16th. Sean Edward Roberts as a deputy with the annual salary of 52,466, that is effective October the 1st, 2024. New hire recommendation received from Mike Lang, Chief Court Marshal for Clifford Pennington as a deputy court marshal with the annual salary of 39,170, that's effective May 31st. A new hire recommendation received from Tim Zia, Community Corrections Director for Ashley Tadella as a DRC therapist with the annual salary of 70,104, and that's effective May the 28th. A new hire recommendation received from our Honorable Larry Hess for Rachel and Leg as a part-time personal property clerk with an hourly rate of 15 an hour, and that's effective May the 9th, 2024. We have a letter of resignation received from the Circuit Clerk's Office for Arissa Brill McCormick, effective May the 15th, 2024. I think that's it. And we have a, need to pull out the minutes from April 24th, 2024. Mr. Boyd was not here, so.
Mr. President, I'm moved you accept the minutes.
I did have a change, if we were to approve it with the change, and Penny's already has the change.
Okay.
Correction or whatever you want.
Okay, I'd like to approve the minutes of the April 25th, 2024, Bedford County Commission meeting as opposed with the correction that Steve mentioned.
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, motion carries.
One abstention.
I have a stop payment check request from the clerk's office, and order establishing Fund 237, or 273 for United Bank South Tiff District. And order establishing the Fund 274 for the United Bank North Tiff District. Anything else? Good? So can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, motion carries. Correction of assessment logs, Mr. Hess, this is up to you. Welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just have seven of them today for office air and personal property. We have to correct for those reasons, most of them were double billed. Total all up is $1,187.92.
Forty-two cents.
Forty-two. 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 All righty, can I have a motion for the seven personal tax exonerations for office air?
Motion to approve the assessments as presented by the assessor in amount of $1,187.42.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, motion carries.
Good.
Board and, is that it?
Thank you very much.
All righty, sir, thank you. Board and meeting reports, Mr. Barnhart, or Mr. Boyd, I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, we had a roundhouse meeting yesterday. Things are going pretty well over there as we're moving forward. We have the farmer's market really starting to take off on Saturdays. The demand and the attendance is really well this year. We're, started last year with five vendors, we have a solid 25, and on special events, upwards of 50 on some events over there. That is up and going. Snap cash for that starts June 1st for low-income and different senior citizens and things like that, so they can shop there, they can get the Snap cats through DHHR and the senior center, I believe. And so that is going well, the elevator and steps project is on track. It is almost finished. The HVAC is, they're doing some things, but it's kind of on hold because they can't get, you know, right now we can't get the.
Gas line move?
Not the gas line move, it's not the hurry of that, because we can't get the meter.
Meter, okay.
You know, Mount near gas says we're at least five more months on getting the meter.
Wow.
That's a little bit of a holdup there. And then we did have a Zoom meeting last week about the upcoming Sportsman event in September, and Mr. Arnt, I don't, I can't recall his first name at the moment, but he headed up the turkey shoot, youth turkey shoot, last month. He has now come on board to help organize that Sportsman show in September and help get some more vendors and really get it put together. He's excited, they did really well with that youth turkey hunt, and he's excited to add this to his resume and help work with the Roundhouse.
Sir, might try to mimic a little bit of what happens up at this farm show, the sport outing, or.
Outdoor sports.
Outdoor sports up in Pennsylvania, yeah.
Yep.
Very good.
Yeah, so, it's coming along, we, I don't know exactly how many vendors we have at the moment, but, you know, we're going to have some gun raffles and different things going on for that. Should be a really big fundraiser for the Roundhouse.
Anything else?
Um, I was at the subdivision meeting on Tuesday, I thought that went well, Eddie and Steve and Gary and Mr. Barnhart was there briefly, and it was a good meeting. I think everyone seemed to be pretty pleased with the direction of what's done, attorneys and our staff in engineering, they've done a great job putting that stuff together, so.
Mr. Barnhart, is that, I'm sorry, is that it?
Yeah.
Mr. Barnhart.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I do want to note in pass, that, in passing, the death of Bob Widmire.
Yes.
Bob was the finest journalist, most wonderful restaurateur I've ever met. I guess I met him in 1973 when he had the original shop.
Where the fire department.
Where the fire department is now, the most miserable building in the city of Martin Where the Fire Department is now, the most miserable building in the city of Martinsburg to operate a food service out of. I was never so glad in my life to see a building come down as that did. But Bob was a wonderful guy, and I miss him a lot. I truly loved his hamburger sub with french fries. It was always my favorite. As far as meetings go, the only meeting I had scheduled was the Telamon, which was canceled because of lack of a quorum. And then it's pretty scheduled for, I think, May 21st. And then, of course, like HD said, I attended for a little while the roundtable discussion, but luckily my wife was there to clue me in on whatever else was discussed that I missed. And of course, we have another session this afternoon, and like HD said, it was a good session.
Very good.
Mr. Catlett.
My office was in the Raymer School for years when I first started it back in the mid-'70s, and my lunch was quite often Bob's subs down there. He was a wonderful human.
Yeah, he was.
Good man. I want to commend again, I know every week, but Commissioner Whitaker, our President, for all the hard work he did down at the youth fairgrounds. The water line has been completed as far as what the responsibilities of the volunteers were, and can't thank you enough, Jim, and all the other people involved. It would be a tremendous improvement for... I had somebody reach out to me yesterday and wanted to know what was going on down there. And their first question was, well, are they doing it so that they can get, be on there to get to my house eventually? And I said, well, as a matter of fact, they are. So I said, oh, can't thank you enough, Jim, and of course, Panhandle Excavating, Alan Henry and his boys have been there through the whole thing as well. And the sewer, or excuse me, the Water District has... Exceptional help.
Yeah, they went out of their way.
I can't say enough good things about the Water District and how they cooperated on this project.
Getting the rights of way and all that sort of stuff.
And also, something really important was to get the additional 400 feet or so to get a hydrant outside the youth fairgrounds for fighting fires down in that whole area of the county was a really big deal.
Don't forget Mike Roberts, I think, did the survey.
Surveying. Yeah, Mike Roberts volunteered all his survey work. I think Hoy volunteered all the legal stuff. I mean, it's just, it was a win-win for the community, and as Gary and I was talking, it's a half a million dollar job if it's contracted out, and we're going to have less than $150,000 in the whole thing, so just, thank you, Jim. Great. The subdivision meeting I did attend, and I just want to extend my appreciation, Jeff, you and the staff, exceptional. I thought everybody was on point, everybody knew what they were talking about, and I was very impressed with the way they handled the meeting and the cooperation with all the people in the room and the community was a good thing to watch, and hopefully this afternoon will be the same, so. Also, on Tuesday, I had a sewer board meeting. The Woods Resort Treatment Plant, the new one is well underway and things are moving in the right direction. And out in the Hedgesville area, they've been replacing, upgrading six new pumping stations, and almost all are completed now. The last one to be done is the one there at, I call it Miller's Curve where Abe's Locks is located, they call it the Eckert Pump Station, but, and that's the most critical one. That's the one that handles probably the most flow of any. That's the last to be getting done, but it's moving in that direction, and hopefully it'll be done here in the next few months as well.
You're showing your age when you call it Miller's Curve.
Well, I am, so that's what we always knew it by.
Yeah, and the next curve is McLaughlin's Curve.
Yeah.
And back east.
So other than that, that's all I had to report, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Eddie?
Yes, sir, the, on Tuesday was the subdivision roundtable discussion, and, you know, for all those folks involved in that, from the builders, the developers, our staff, you know, everybody contributed, everybody had those discussions, and I appreciate how that was all handled. The staff, you know, I know we had three different sessions last year and getting a lot of that ironed out, but thank everybody for that work. It's not been easy, and, but it's certainly been needed, that's for sure. Development Authority met yesterday, still very busy showing different parcels of real estate to different corporations looking here, working very closely with the gas company, Potomac Edison. And they're renovating the 400 building for the VA Center. They have a long-term lease with the VA, so that renovation will be starting very soon. They just finally got their building permits to get going. Yesterday evening, I met with the Morgan Cabin Group as a member of Landmarks to discuss some future needs that they have there and to address and help have a conversation and prioritize some of their expenditures there. I say subdivision ordinance this afternoon and fire board tonight. Very good.
Anything else?
That's it.
All righty. I have one meeting on Monday, which is Planning Commission. We had four public hearings that evening, two preliminary plat approvals and two final plat determinations. And then we had a, just a little staff and council discussion when it come to the roundtable that was, that took place. My job prevented me from being there on Tuesday, so my apologies there to you all, but thank you all for attending, and we'll get an update here later on this afternoon. So in the public comments of the Planning Commission meeting, we had Mr. Rodriguez, who's always concerned with this, you know, what happens in the county and the safety of our citizens, and I want to thank him for his comments. There was also a couple, during the public hearings, that a couple residents shared their concerns, and what it mostly led up to was the, was the schools' inability to handle the growth that we have as well as the roads. And again, those are the two things that we don't have a whole lot of say over, but we do send out the information once we garner it and get it to the, get it to the Board of Education and to the Department of Highway, so I want to thank, you know, the public for their attendance and their continued concerns for the county. And that was all that I had. Oh, I did attend the Jazz Band Festival, it must have been high school last night. It was excellent, so.
Yeah, there was something.
Yeah. You get a chance to hear them, I would highly recommend it, even with any of the schools.
Award-winning.
Yes, they are. They, Mid-Atlantic, Nash, they were in Nashville, they took a trip to Greece as well as Italy, and a couple of the other places.
So you're saying they're on par with the girls volleyball team, is that kind of level?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Pretty impressive, that.
For the music that was played, yes, it was. Very talented individuals up there, so. I can play a radio, but that's about it, so. All righty, we have, and the Board of Meeting, any vacancies that anybody wants to appoint to, or?
We do have application for...
Christopher Williams for the fire board.
Like to go ahead and make that notification again, interview, please.
Okay.
We do have an opening there.
And 10 o'clock, well, we're a little bit early, but I see Brian Costello's here with his group if he wants to come on up and, it's a request to...
There's a smiling group back there, they've got the greatest smiles.
Move the reoccurring annual validation for homestead discount.
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
Great day to be in our county, right?
Yes, it is.
It is, that's why they're smiling back there. But anyway, the last time we were here, a little over a month ago, making changes to our household ordinance, we were given a task by Commissioner Gokunower to look at whether or not we could change the homestead validation to one and done for perpetuity. The ladies behind me, our staff took the task, they worked with county IT and others to figure out whether or not we could do this, and in fact, I'm here today to tell you that we can. So rather than have to go back through a new addition to that ordinance, it doesn't go into effect till July, so we can simply make a change to the appendix that deals with that. So what we're asking is for your approval to allow us to go to a single validation on the homestead exemption, and that'll last from the time that person gets it until they're no longer with us.
Okay, thank you. That's a tremendous help.
And that's the same thing that they already do with the assessor's office, that when somebody comes in and applies for it, it follows their lifeline. But you guys, from the, from the top down, have continually worked to make this ordinance more user-friendly. We had a little bit of struggles in the beginning, but we worked through them. It was because of your cooperation that allowed that, because it hadn't had, had never been done before, and you said it wasn't going to be easy, and it wasn't easy, but it's the right thing, and it gave those who are disabled and who are under homestead exemption an opportunity to not have to pay that additional fee. And thank you all for your work.
Now, does this mean that they have to do something for the next billing, or did the previous exemption still carry through?
If they've already applied and we have that documentation that's one and done, they're good.
I think the goal now is to get more people that, there's over, correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, but I think there's getting close to 10,000 people now that qualify either through homestead or disabilities with this credit or, you know, $25 a year. And I think we're at 30-some percent that actually took advantage of it.
Yeah, last year we were setting at 9,300 qualified, and 3,253, I think, was the number that actually...
About a third.
Yeah, about a third that did it.
So our goal is to try to get people to take advantage of it and maybe do a better type this time of getting the word out, you know, so that they know that, so. That's our objective, is to get it up to, I'd say, 100%. That's why we did it.
Yeah. Well, we need a motion to approve the validation for the reoccurring.
I'd like to make that motion, serving on the Amel's Authority Board, and I appreciate all the staff that, Brian and the staff and all the work they do, and I'd like to move to, to put this in place.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed? Motion carries, sir. Thank you.
All right, the last one, I have a quick stick in since I have a little bit of time. Back in November, I had an opportunity to meet a gentleman at the Dulles Expo Center that was an author, and we struck up a conversation, and he does children's books. It's called a Glad to Do It series that deals with public safety. So during the course of the conversation, of course, he saw the tattoos that kind of drew him in. We had a conversation, and I told him about a story that I'm sure Commissioner Gokunower will remember is the, the front end loader rescue up in the Back Creek Valley area back during Winter Storm Jonas a few years back. Well, he has taken that story and turned it into a children's book, of course, using short, you know, fictitious characters. I was able to give Commissioner Catlett his at our board meeting, but I'm going to provide you guys advanced copy. The author will be here during International EMS Week. He'll be here on Friday, the 24th, doing a book signing at Banks Books as well as our luncheon that we'll be holding for our employees, but I want to go ahead and give you guys an advanced copy of what that's like.
Well, thank you. That was an opportunity where Christie Pearl, who was the EMT on the, thank you, was on the Amel's, calls her dad, who's Gary Butts, and have him bring a machine up to get him in to get this person out, and it's pretty cool.
Yeah, and actually in there, there's, like, page three, there's a testimonial and pictures of the actual people that took part of it, and then, of course, the book is told in fiction of who the EMTs are and the place, but, you know, we're very proud of it. It's something we can leave behind, something that we can give to our grandkids and kids and things to say, hey, this is what your mom, dad, aunts, uncles, grandparents do, so we're very proud of it. So enjoy it. Hopefully you'll stop by our luncheon on Friday, the 24th, during EMS Week.
Do you know where these are available?
They are available on Amazon. When he comes into town that day doing his book signing, he will also have books with him as well. So, thank you.
There was, there was a blurb on the newscast on the Weather Channel that, I think it was, at Jeridstown or no? Well, Back Creek Valley had the deepest record snow, it was over 41 inches.
Yeah, I think we, I think we listed it at 42, something like that. But, thank you.
I'm presenting one to my youngest grandchild, daughter. She's in second grade at Rosemont, and she read to the kindergarten class last week. Thought she was the hottest thing in the world now. And so I'm going to give her a book this, that book this weekend so she can read to the kindergarten class, so.
That's good.
This particular book, so, but it's really a neat little story there.
It is, it is, we're very proud of it, so, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Let's see. Chief, is he here?
He's outside.
He's outside, okay.
I see folks up. She's going to sheriff out and call, they keep popping in.
Maybe he's waiting on somebody.
Hey, Brian, you tell the sheriff to come in when he gets out there, they're out there.
We're a little bit early, but... They don't come in?
We're taking a little break.
We'll take a break until they get in here. We'll take a break until they get in here.
Got any questions?
Okay, we're, we're back on session or in session and we have Chief Burnett here to tell us a little bit about the bid award recommendation duty pistols for the Sheriff's Department. Got the first thing up?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Good morning. Sorry about the confusion here this morning. We had a last minute change in some of the bid numbers.
Okay.
Okay, so the bids went out and the last section, you guys were able to go ahead and open the bids and check them all. With Lieutenant Christian and our other gun, gun guys that are a lot more smarter on guns than I am, we have decided to go with shadow systems. You guys have any questions on the shadow systems? I did bring Lieutenant Christian with me. As far as, as far as the guns, I'll start off, start off there first. The bid was for 85 weapons. Total cost is $78,064.85. The Safari Land holsters are going to be $11,237.85. And the Surefire flashlights, 70 of those are going to be $16,837.10. So if you add all that up, if my math is right, or if Lieutenant Christian's math is right, it comes to $106,139.80. And I know what you guys are probably looking at is probably going to be different than what I'm saying.
Eric, you have to walk them through, there were two bids.
Yes.
You have to walk them through one bid first and then the second bid. So stick with the guns is where you start.
So the guns, the guns, we chose to go with Lawnman's Distribution. There was two other bids that they bid on the sites only. So the only bid that we did receive was through Lawnman's Distribution at the $78,064.85.
That was the bid amount that you opened?
Yes.
They just skipped bidding on the guns? They just bid the sites?
No, this is for the weapons.
This is just weapons.
This is the weapons only.
Do you want to, do you want to do these separately?
You do, you'll need a motion separately and it should be noted that the Sheriff's Department with the diligent effort of, of the chief and the sheriff, they do have a grant. That money is received. So that money coupled with.
Just the Steely Foundation grant?
They want to keep it quiet, but yes, sir.
I'm sorry. And so both requests that you're, they're asking you for is funded in, in their current budget. So the first motion would be to approve the pistols for $78,064.85.
Yes, sir. The Lawnman's Distribution.
I would move to do that. Yes, please.
Okay, have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed. Motion carries.
So with buying new weapons, you also have to buy new flashlights and holsters.
Two separate bids, right?
This is going to be one.
This is the second bid.
Yeah, so, so it's going to be the second bid.
Okay.
The flashlight and holsters, Safari Land holsters, we are going to purchase 85 at a total of $11,237.85. In addition, we're going to buy 70 Surefire flashlights at a total of $16,837.10. For a combined $28,074.95. With all the bids that we sent out, the lowest bid was Markle Supply Company at the $28,074.95.
And you do, you did receive that, you did open and that's the exact amount received?
Okay. So with that being said, do I have a motion to accept the Markle Supply Company for sights? I'm sorry, holsters and flashlights. Is that correct? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Have a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed. Motion carries, sir.
Yes, sir. Do you want me to talk about how we're going to pay for it? No. Well, that's great.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Long as you know that they can get paid for and nobody's coming to us pointing the gun.
We are, um, the final cost is actually going to, we're going to have an extra of $5,143.20 due to bidding. So we're actually going to be in a positive after everything is done. It's not going to cost taxpayers any money at all.
Very good.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Anything else? That's it? I mean, you've got a good entourage out there.
Well, if you had any questions about the sher, or, or the shadow systems, I did bring Lieutenant Christian with us and he's our, he's our gun expert.
Would the commission like to hear why they're switching?
Yes, we would. They were going to put you right on the spot, sir.
So the reason that we're upgrading our firearms is we're going to go to having a red dot sight on there. If you've ever shot iron sights versus a red dot, with an iron sighted weapon, you're lining up three focal planes essentially. Your target, your front sight, your rear sight. When you use a red dot sight, you're only lining up two focal planes. You put the red dot on your target and that's where your rounds point to go. So you're taking some of the human error out of trying to line up three things at once. At nighttime, it's much more clear. Instead of looking at three green dots in front of you, you're looking at one red dot, red dot on your target. So the new pistols that we're looking at going to, they're proprietary pistols. They're made in Plano, Texas by one company and one company only. Everything's made in the USA with American labor. It's one of their things on their website that they really, you know, go into great detail that they make everything in here in our country. With the pistols, there are less parts than with most other guns. So for example, the Glock that I'm carrying has an extra plate that you have to put between the sight and the pistol in order to mount this optic on the gun. With the shadow systems, they're made specifically for the sight you want. So the sight mounts directly to the gun, so there's one less possible point of failure in there. So with this gun specifically, I have two screws that hold the plate to the weapon and then I have two screws that hold the sight to the plate. So if one of those screws fails, something can come out. It, you know, could be catastrophic essentially. With the shadow systems pistols, there's only two screws that go in, so there's less points of failure so that if we do have something go wrong, then it's less likely to happen versus something with four points of failure.
So this isn't a laser dot that goes to the target? This is just like a holographic dot that goes out there?
Yes, sir. It's a holographic sight, so whenever you come up on target, the dot is right there in front of, in front of you and that's where you place on your target here.
Very good.
What happens to the current, the weaponry?
The current weapons are going to be purchased back by Lawman Supply. We're receiving money back for those, which is part of the reason that they're going to be to the positive on our funding is so they're going to do a buyback program with us. Once we've fully transitioned and everybody has their shadow systems issued to them, then Lawman Supply is going to come up here. They're going to take our, our, our old weapons and take them back to their distribution center and do everything with the ATF paperwork.
Do they have to be declared surplus?
Oh, dude, that's not as a trait. What's the range on a pistol like that?
We train to 25 yards. That's what we qualify to. Yesterday at the range, I was hitting a steel plate at 50 yards every round. So, but we only train and certify at 25, but for those of us who go out and shoot a lot, you can get more.
Same caliber?
Yes, sir. It's a nine millimeter, same caliber ammunition. So there's no change over there. And all the extra magazines that we've purchased, so we'll have some magazines that won't go back to the distributor. They only get three magazines per pistol. So the extra magazines we have will still work in our new pistol. So there's no extra expense of buying more magazines or anything like that.
How many rounds per magazine?
17 in the mag and one in the chamber. So every officer carries 52 rounds when they're on.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Why you came with us.
Okay. Alrighty, so that's all done. Mr. Wine, you have a health insurance renewals. You want to introduce our guest room?
We sure can. You have Lynn from Gibson and Associates and Cody from Highmark Blue Cross. So Cody's commute was short. He probably left at 3:00 AM to get here.
This morning?
Probably 5:30.
5:30?
Well, welcome. I love it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll tell you a story when we're off camera.
Sounds good.
So come on up if you have any.
Oh, I was just. Yeah. As Mr. Wine had said, my name's Cody Misakovic. I'm here on behalf of Highmark Blue Cross Blue Shield of West Virginia. With the help of Gary, Penny, Lynn, the rest of their team, we were able to get through, hopefully, the renewal with everything. It took a lot of brain power and we just appreciate your all's business, your continued partnership with us, and it's been a pleasure and I look forward to continuing to work with you all.
Gary said it was a 4% reduction, is that correct?
This is on record, right? But yes, we appreciate your guys' partnership.
For the record, I was trying to be funny.
No, 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 I appreciate it, but no, I appreciate your all's trust and your time and effort and a lot went into it. Discussion, a lot of data points, and it's just, it's been fantastic to be on this account for about 10 years now.
I want to thank you all for your all's current efforts and all that you do for the employees of Berkeley County, so.
Thank you.
Want me to walk you through?
Yes, sir, please.
So Cody, Cody didn't lie. Lynn sits there and Lynn and Penny, I got to tell you, so no matter who says what around here, Utah benefits, that one right there and that young lady right there, they worked their kazoo off to kind of get us where we are. First and foremost, everyone should know and understand that the county commission budgets and contributes approximately $4 million a year to help offset the costs of employee benefits, healthcare benefits. I'm uniquely positioned where my spouse doesn't work under the auspices of the government, so I know what costs are out there. The five of you should be commended for what you do and have done and continue to do for your employees. That being said, let's start out with talking about where we started. We started looking at a offered 15% increase on healthcare premiums. That's where it started. As you all know, they're in business to make money. We're in business to argue with how much money they make. And it all starts out with, well, here's our loss, here's your usage, you know, here's how this works. Clearly, if they can't make money, they can't stay in business. So there has to be some happy medium based on what your needs are, what your uses are, and how they can stay in business. So we started at 15% and we're talking about health insurance. Worked that, we looked at some, we, we looked at the coverages and, and what the deductibles were, your, your existing deductibles and your current plan for your, started at 750. I need to read my read ahead. I should have this on, Thomas. So it's a 753,000?
Currently or?
Yeah, currently, 750.
1,500.
1,503 and.
5,000 for the HSA.
Right. So we stepped back and looked at what the opportunities were and the, what the proposed scenarios are, taking the 750 to 1,500, taking the 1,500 to 3,000, and then creating a 9100 as the high option and eliminating the HSA. So you have, under this policy, Steve had a brief discussion in a particular place today that those are your options for your employees. It's the same plan, those are the deductible options. And obviously, the, the higher your deductible option is, the more attractive the premium is to the employee. So the lower option, it's, it's important to note that your low option, $1,500 option, that your $10,000 contribution 100% still covers the employee. So the employees, single, the employee, not family, you're still, you still contribute enough to cover 100% employee healthcare costs. And in today's marketing, you can watch Cody's face. Cody, how, what's the percentage of employers that cover 100% of their employee cost?
Zero.
There you go. So you're still one of a kind for employee healthcare right now. It costs a lot of money, a lot of money and a lot of work to, to continue to support that. So the proposed changes on healthcare, the big changes are deductible increases. We went from 1,500, from 750 to 1,500, from 1,500 to 3,000, and then from 5,000 to 90...
7,500.
7,500 to 9100. Those are the big changes. The only other subtle change in healthcare is emergency room costs. The, the current, the current deductible was 150 and we're proposing that to go to 500 on emergency room visits. The really only changes that we're proposing in this, and those are the pieces we used to negotiate to bring that 15% down to 4.62.
One piece, well, that $500 will be.
Correct. If you go to the ER and you're admitted, that 500 is eliminated. That was 150. We're proposing it to 500.
Right.
ER visits are very expensive. However, if you went and you had a broken leg or you're having a heart attack or where it may be, and you end up in the hospital, that fees weigh. It is not advantageous to your policy and it's not advantageous to your premiums to use the emergency room for non-emergency room type visits. If you have a headache or you have a rash, that's what, that's what urgent cares are for. Well, if you go to the ER, it is very expensive. So what is the deductible if they go to one of the clinics, you know, that either WBUE's or Valley Health have?
$75 copay.
Excuse me?
$75 copay.
It's a copay. $75 copay. That's correct.
And I believe that Valley Health has. Valley Health, however, will offer them a $25 copay. Any Valley Health, Inwood, Winchester, Charles Town, they have a.
Yes.
Contract with Blue Cross Blue Shield. I would say, I, I, a couple. They do not. We actually have the, the new chief or the ambulance authority actually worked hand in hand with the Valley Health as some kind of, some kind of management contractor with those, with that contract with Blue Cross. And I was in a meeting doing his benefit enrollment. He called them and said, look, you're losing business. Get this posted in every, every Valley Health. They have a contract with Blue Cross Blue Shield, so they offer our employees the, the doctor, it's the family practitioner rate of $25. So if they go to any family, any Valley Health, they only pay 25. Any other Med Express, all those, they pay 75. Feel better than going to the hospital.
After the emergency room. And remember, that's the $150, what it was proposing it to 500, that's the cost to them. The cost.
Yeah.
To the insurance is astronomical.
It's terrible.
I mean, it's no joke. I mean, it's very important and we're going to begin working with the employees and kind of, and then training to explain just that, right? You don't want to deter anyone that needs to go to the emergency room, but if it's a, if it's a hefty case of, you know, poison ivy this time of year, don't go to the ER. There, it saves everybody.
And I think part of this is. Or they got turned away so we don't have any more appointments. So they're going to be.
My daughter's a proponent of actually calling the head and getting an appointment.
Right.
And I know sometimes it's when you're sick, you want to get there and get the care that you need or that you want. And I know that that doesn't always work, but it has, you know, that phone call.
When you don't feel well.
Right. I would rather wait there in my own chair than in a waiting room, that's for sure.
The, the, the only other change to, and it's not changed to the poly, it's change policy, it's changed to the price platform. Historically, in the bottom part, and we started backwards only because we invited Cody at first, in the charges for employee child or employee spouse, we used to increase, there used to be a difference in cost between what employee child was and what employee spouse is. It's still employee plus one. So Cody so kindly offered, hey, we would suggest these price points. And when I looked at it, their proposal was it's employee plus one, it doesn't matter whether it's a child or a spouse. So I mirrored theirs, so I'm offering or, or asking the commission, as you look through those, they still have a 4.62% increase, but whether you're employee spouse or employee child, that, that rate is one. It doesn't matter. They used to be, used to increase for spouse. And I, I brought them down and I'm offering to you that you consider. I'm comfortable that that's as much as we're going to squeeze out unless you want to bring Cody up and blast him a little bit.
The guy's with the guns already loud, so.
Right. But a collaborative effort by everyone involved. What I think, what we've never done in recent years is a holistic look at the compensation packages and I think probably I'll be asking some of you in the near future, through the next year, to really sit down and dig deep and, and make sure what we're doing is best. But for now, again, a lot of work, a lot of effort and I'm comfortable proposing to you that what we have here is really what's best for you and the employees in the next fiscal year.
Hey, buddy, how long have you all been offering the dental?
We've done dental for probably about two...
I never knew you did that, yeah.
Yeah, we have a sister, we got branded vision or dental, which is what that Blue Edge dent, but we have a sister company. That works with claims processing.
Penny, you think that'll be more acceptable to the locals?
Absolutely will, I've already checked it before.
Because I know it's been a problem with the old one.
We checked it before we ever started with Cody on this process. We had a listing of about two participants in Martinsburg for Delta Dental now. Everything was, and Lynn and I started this last year at renewal, saying, you know, we're like, whatever new unless you get us some participants. We're working on it, we're going to get you a whole list. Well, we're still at this year and we have two providers in Martinsburg in Berkeley County. Everything is in Maryland, Upperstown. Cody's list with Highmark provides twenty to twenty-five at least in Berkeley County. So all of our employees will be very pleased, they can go back to their dentist and be able to actually use their dental insurance.
And it's Blue Cross Blue Shield?
It's called Blue Edge.
Blue Edge Dental, okay.
And the good thing is there'll be less administrative work for Penny, so this is all through Highmark.
Yes, we'll be on one Highmark portal.
One enrollment portal.
Just FYI, I did... Question was... That's the problem, that's the...
We've been searching this for probably, what, three or four years, we've been contemplating this, searching it and hoping Delta Dental will get better. It's not. Time to...
All right, anything else?
No, sir.
You would like a motion to approve, I'm sure the employees would. So we need a motion to approve the insurance renewals, the healthcare as well as dental and vision.
And life.
And life, I'm sorry.
I would so move to do that, as recommended by staff and...
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like sign opposed, motion carries. Thank you all very much. And do we have a possible executive session or we're good? Okay, we will reconvene at eleven at, toward the Monument Company's Interwoven Properties at eleven o'clock. Any special place?
You said park off King Street, right across from the Mission.
Show an email.
Okay, right across from the Rescue Mission, okay. Sounds good. Have a motion to break until eleven or recess? Well, I believe we can do that.
I think you want to recess because you're not going to be able to recess later, so.
Okay. All right, I'll, I'll change that to say recess. Okay, we're going to recess and then we reconvene back here at one o'clock if you want to with the subdivision rates.
Holiday Inn.
Holiday Inn, I'm sorry. Okay, we are in recess.